All this April eighth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the town council um to order. And it is seven oh one. Roll call.
Ron Granger.
Here.
Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Todd Dang.
Here.
Sean Morgan.
Here.
Tim Weber.
Here.
Kyle Wren. Robbie Neela.
Here.
Okay, Tim, would you do the invocation for us?
Sure, let's bow and pray. Oh heavenly Father, gracious Lord, King of the universe, and almighty God, we thank you for the many graces and mercies you bestow upon us that are known and unknown. We thank you also for your son, Jesus, who died on the cross for our sins and was risen three days later. For all who call upon his name, they shall be saved. And Lord, I pray over this meeting tonight that you put your hand on it, you guide us uh and protect us uh from the evil one, help us to make decisions on behalf of those that we represent, that are pleasing to you, uh and also help them. Lord, I lift up our many companies and our many oil and gas industries, our coal mine, and all involved that you um put a special protection on them uh from the evils that are attacking it. And Lord God, I thank you for our EMS, our police, our fire, uh Lord, we just ask that you um protect them and continue to be with them. I thank you for our college, uh and our many other governmental entities in this community. I thank you for our new town manager, Lord God, I ask that you just give him discernment and understanding and uh quickening and understanding our community, which I know he has a great grasp on and uh just lead and guide him and lead and guide us tonight in this meeting. And may we honor you in your son, Jesus Christ's precious name. Amen.
Amen. Lisa, I'm still gonna ask you to lead our place tonight.
Oh.
One last time.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes of the meeting, five, a discussion and action to approve the town council minutes of March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, Tim, second by Robbie. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay, it passes. Petitions and public input, did we have anything? I I I just wanna say one thing real quick, Trey, good to see you, glad you could make it and and be here. Trey's a a former town council person, former mayor pro Tim, so uh we can, we miss you on being up here, so thanks for coming tonight. Um, is there any changes to our agenda?
They're so public.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. My my apologies.
I'm Andy Kraft, most of you know me. Um, I live up on the Mesa at one, two, three, seven Deserado Drive. I'm inquiring about purchasing the lot owned by the town, which is directly to the west of my lot at address one, two, two, seven Deserado Drive. I wanna purchase this lot because it has been basically unused since the subdivision was built. Looking around the neighborhood, there are a lot of empty lots owned by private parties, and I feel this specific lot would be a good one for me to inquire about. Over the last two years living next to it, I've mowed the grass, cleaned up the weeds, tried to keep it looking decent so the weeds don't travel into my yard. If I'm able to acquire it, I plan to combine it with my current lot, and that giving me a total of point three five of an acre. Looking around the subdivision, including all the empty lots that have been added to others, this would be right around the average size of lots up there. I've done some research on the lot, I have a market valuation that specifies sale prices around town for empty lots. The valuation is broken into price paid by square foot. According to the valuation, the lot is worth approximately eleven thousand six hundred dollars. More specifically, the average price per lot, per lot in the town of Rangelley between the years of twenty twenty three and twenty twenty five is one point five zero three dollars per square foot. The lot I'm inquiring about has a square footage of seven thousand seven hundred and forty nine. I want to make a formal offer of eleven thousand dollars. I'm open to any negotiations, and I thank you for your time.
And I did tell him that would be a conversation between the new town manager, so I appreciate you presenting for them, but that will be.
Okay. I was just. I needed him up here and present.
Well, I appreciate that, but.
Yeah.
Sorry for the nerves.
You did a good job.
I don't like talking.
Yes.
He's not like that at work at all.
So so I I got a question for you real quick, I know that we don't have, but so when you go buy it, are you just gonna make it into just a bigger one lot, I mean like?
Yes.
So you have a bigger piece of property, is that all you're trying to do? You're not thinking about building on it or anything, or?
Not anytime soon because of the way prices are and stuff. I just mostly wanna own it so I can do more to clean it up, maybe put a fence around it, kinda gravel it down, make it nice.
It reminds me of me, you know, so the property I bought, then I bought two other properties to go with it, so we put a fence around, take care of it, and that's kinda what we did, so.
Cause I just think it would look better that way.
But mine has three different addresses on three different streets, so it's kinda different. But anyway, okay.
Did you say eleven million or eleven thousand?
Thousand. I work with Robbie, I can't afford eleven million.
That's why.
He's paying well.
Anybody have any questions, or?
No, I just wanna say, I've been, this is the third year I've been on the town council, and of all the people who approached me with issues, you're the first one who I've advised to come talk to us that's actually came and talked to us. I know it wasn't easy for you, but thanks for coming back. We'll go through the right channels, we don't, of course, have any short answer, but.
Yep, I just wanted to get it out there. I appreciate you guys' time and let me do it.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Yes, sir, thank you.
So it started two thousand?
The twenty three or twenty five?
Trey.
Don Alrobi, Rangelley resident. It's actually off the do it, right? Um, I just come in cause of uh the liquor license violation and the punishment they were given. I'm a little confused on why it was such a harsh punishment. Um, like you said, I've sat up there for many years and we've had multiple violations with other people, and we've never set the hammer so hard. Um, so I'd just like some feedback on why we decided now that we wanna do that.
So I'm the one who proposed it, Trey.
Um. Oh, I watched the meetings.
Do what?
I watched the meetings.
Okay. Uh yeah, so I asked Andy and people who've been here for a long time, and nobody could remember any violations, and don't wanna set the record that we are not good at those. And uh yeah, and I honestly wanted to make a statement with it. Um, I don't feel according to the conversations with the college and stuff, that some of the, some of the issues were taken very seriously. And um I wanted to to be sure the future violators wouldn't be so relaxed with the with the liquor policy and the liquor violations and you know, at the end of the day, if they would've done things right, it wouldn't have been an issue.
That's true. And I'd be clear, so if we set the precedence, that's what's going to be from here on out. Any liquor violations will be followed in the exact same policy, correct?
Uh, no, there was multi, there was multiple violations. I hope we don't get good at setting the punishment.
There were no ticketed violations, correct?
Excuse me?
There were no ticketed violations?
There's no, no, we we talked to the police chief and he was not interested in pursuing any sort of criminal.
Uh, they, you had um ticketed violations in the state of Colorado, that the state of Colorado ticketed. Um.
Normally, the state won't tend to especially now to.
No, yeah, I understand that, but their violations were fines, you know?
We chose not to fine, we could fine.
Yeah, that's where I'm going, is why didn't we choose that route to, cause like I said, there's uh Colorado has fined other places for actually selling to minors, and it was a five hundred dollar fine. I'm just kinda curious why, like I said, why such harsh penalties?
Honestly, I didn't think it was very harsh because they can still sell alcohol at the at the vents. They don't have the permit, but they can third party the alcohol sales. So they, we can't say they can't profit from the alcohol. So if towels or the Elks or somebody would like to get a alcohol permit for the the events, that just, we're not gonna not issue special use permits for their functions, we're not gonna issue them to the chamber. So if a third party would like to do that, we didn't want a financial impact on. That's, if you look at it, we, how much do we contribute to the chamber?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand a year, that's, if we find them, that's just coming from the town. So honestly, we're not we didn't say they can't have alcohol at their functions, we're not gonna issue the chamber the license, the permit. So if the Elks would like to serve the alcohol or somebody else would like to third party the alcohol, they could split the profits however they wanna arrange that. That's not up to us, but we never once said they couldn't have alcohol at their deal. We're just not gonna issue the chamber the permit. So if somebody else wants to third party it, they're welcome to do that. And I think there was multiple violations, Trey, I think.
Well, and I've read a lot and on the investigation too, was the chamber involved in that? Cause the way I understood it, the investigation happened the day of the meeting, correct?
No.
Well, Maribel and I had a meeting with C N C C that day, and I explained to you why that happened. Um, and we just got firsthand what the students testified to.
Was the chamber given a chance to rebuttal anything that the students said?
I believe they knew what the students said. They were the ones that contacted the um program to begin with.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they were here the day Maribel read the statement, so they could have stated if they disagreed with that. They had their whole group here. Nobody was preventing them from.
No, but it is different though to be bombarded, you know what I mean, than.
They knew what the allegations were.
Oh, yeah. Read everything.
Do you have the, do you have the chamber letter?
Yeah.
Didn't they address every one of the things in their letter? I was pretty sure. And the letter that we had on the.
Not Maribel's letter.
No, so the chamber letter, yes. Yeah, I've got, I've got the.
Was there anything in Maribel's letter that wasn't on the the college letter for?
There are there were things, again, like the student serving, which they're MPS students, they're criminal justice students, and the program has set forth their guidelines, that you have to be twenty one or turning twenty one in the fiscal year of your program. And they've done this for multiple years. So where they say they didn't tell them what they were doing, they were told, they've been told for multiple years how to conduct themselves and.
Nobody told them what to do that night, and you have different students in there, and it's not the students' responsibility, it's the chamber's responsibility.
Oh, yeah. Like I said, I'm not saying that they didn't do anything wrong by any means. They did, they messed up. I'm just, like I said, I'm there trying to figure out why the hammer was hit so hard, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I just, I honestly, I didn't think that was very hard. We can't, you know, we can't really discuss it unless in this area, I proposed that, nobody opposed it.
Oh, you can discuss in this area, absolutely.
Do, I know, but nobody did. Like, we can't do it in a private meeting.
Oh, no, yeah, I know that.
Um, honestly, I didn't think it was a very harsh punishment, no fines. Like I said, they can still serve alcohol, but they're not gonna get the permit. It's not, it's not like they can't.
Well, they can't serve alcohol, they could have somebody else serve it, yes.
Yeah, but they can, you know, honestly, if they cut the middleman out, cause the chamber just has to purchase the alcohol anyways. So if whoever's like the third party is wholesaling the alcohol, they can split the profits. I don't know, that's up to them to decide how they do it. But I s- I really didn't think that that was a harsh punishment, and after talking, there was like Mr. Schaefer couldn't remember any violations. Past violations. He's, he's been the one.
Remember any.
He's been the longest one.
We haven't had any special event.
No, I don't think a special event one has.
Yeah.
Which we've all been to certain ones that probably should've.
Well, that's, that's my, that's why I said I hope we don't get good at this, because every special event from here on out is gonna be under a huge microscope.
And in my eyes, every liquor license. And I know they're, liquor license is a liquor license, they have different classifications on selling at the liquor store than they do selling at the bar, and there are different ones, but again, if we're gonna set that precedence, it needs to be held to all.
I agree.
Liquor licenses.
It's also different, Trey, because special event permits are us and us only, where your liquor stores that sell liquor, that is through the state where the state is.
Yeah, but we still, we still approve first, which still makes us.
Right, but it's not just dependent on us, you know what I mean? Like Loaf and Jug has had violations that they provided in their renewal. And it's still up to the town council, yes, but at the end of the day, that still goes back, if they go back and look at all their violations, even if we say yes.
Oh, yeah.
They can say no, so the end of the day i- it's, it's, the state may be more lenient than we are, it's just, we're more of a local special event permit type of where, you know, that doesn't go to the state to have those violations, quote unquote, against them.
Trey, at the end of the day, I really felt that they took that uh event, the alcohol, very lackadaisical. It's a, it's a big responsibility, I think. Um, especially when you're dealing with how many people are in that room. I felt they really were very lax on the whole alcohol situation, and I wanna s- and I honestly wanted to set a tone for anybody else. They need to take that permit very seriously and and be adults about serving alcohol instead of partiers. You know, you gotta have people who set the tone and manage that correctly, and that may mean that you don't get to participate in the party. I don't know, I can't tell them that, but I did, I personally, when I proposed that, I did wanna set the tone to anybody in the future applying for the permit that, yeah, it's gonna be under a microscope, and if you choose to violate and ignore all this stuff, you're gonna get the permit, and I can't tell you how anybody else is gonna do, but as far as me and if I'm on this board, I'm gonna be very serious about the alcohol violations. That's the first one, and you know, as a council, if we wanna revisit the punishment, I personally am not opposed to discussion, but I also am not at all sorry for the the one year.
No, like I said, they messed up, like one hundred percent, I'm not denying anything.
Oh, I get it.
You know, I just, like I said, I just I felt it was harsh, I felt it was more of a probation, give them a two-year probation type thing where, man, you better cross your teeth and dot your i's type stuff. But that's just my personal opinion.
I get it, I mean, that's not unfair, just.
Yeah, I just didn't, they all, like I said, first offense, I was slap on the wrist, make sure, you know, hey, you better, we are watching hard now.
But also, all those violations that they say didn't happen, that's coming first party from the mouths of the people. That's not Dr. Jones typing a letter. I requested the second meeting to be sure that, I didn't want any he said, she said, I wanted to hear that they heard from the first party individuals that that stuff actually happened.
Who was in that meeting when you interviewed the students? Was it just you two?
Maribel and myself, um, Dr. Jones and Chuck, but she was in the interviews, but Chuck and Kathy, and they spoke to their testimony.
Yeah. And, you know, when you're.
And we specifically asked them if any instruction was given to the students, and there was not.
I feel like when you're sitting in an interview with your boss and, you know, your teacher and your president, you're probably gonna say what they wanna hear.
I talked to them uh after that meeting because I didn't understand who was going to talk about that, and they just misunderstood how it was gonna be.
Okay.
And that was one on one with them.
Okay.
And then Maribel wasn't part of that, so that's why we went back, cause she's a liquor clerk.
Okay, well, I guess I was curious.
Anything different from them one on one than I did in that meeting?
Okay.
And and I, I mean this respectfully, and I, but I'm wondering why you're here and not them. Are you on the board? Are you on the rec, on the chamber board?
No, cause I spent eight years up there.
I, I mean, I respect that, you fully got, but if they were really trying to make amends, in my head, they would, they would, they would be here asking these questions. But I, I'm not saying they need to, I'm just, to me, you being here tells me that they don't really, I don't know if they, they care, I know your wife is very steep, I'm sure you've had the conversations, and I'm sincerely not trying to disrespect anybody, but I, I'm seriously, I would appreciate, you know, if they were here to back you up with this, but they don't need any backup. Sorry.
No, no, and I talked and I told them, I said, I didn't want them here.
Okay.
I told the wife, I don't want you here. I'm a big boy, I can come up.
That's fair.
Yeah. Anyway.
Cause I wanted it to be
Well, unfortunately, she wanted it during the event.
No.
She wasn't part of it, and it wouldn't have, never happened.
Yeah. We weren't here. We get it, Tim. So, no, like I said, I was just curious, cause I can remember liquor tickets. And it wasn't, like I said, and it was very few. Wasn't a big deal. You said, all right, you know, watch it, people, you're on the radar now, type thing. Perfect, all right, thanks, Ash.
Thanks, Trey.
Thanks, Trey.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
There is a change, another action item, so Rangel East Transportation group meets on Thursday, and they said, I don't remember us appointing you, Ron, but they said you were appointed as the first vote. I've always attended those, so I don't recall that, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure that the council obviously Alan will be attending all of those meetings, and then we can have a council member as a backup, so I just.
I don't remember me either, so.
Well, again, I, we went back and looked at minutes, and neither Maribel nor I could find that, so since there is a meeting on Thursday, I just think it's appropriate to appoint Alan and then have Ron as the backup for the voting member for Rangel East Transportation, and that's our um district meeting with C Dot, and he can pick on him about Douglas and Highway sixty four.
Okay. Got it?
That's why I gotta back back.
It's gonna get worse.
It's gonna get worse.
All right, number eight, public hearings, second final reading of ordinance seven oh four, twenty twenty five, amended municipal code fifteen point five zero, historical structure preservation. Anybody got anything? Okay. Going to number nine, committee and board meetings. Anything?
I attended the um State of the River meeting that was at uh the gathering place. And basically, there was a lot of information given out, I've got, I've got the information if anybody wants to see it, but they're stating uh from the state side of it, I believe is where it's at, that at Taylor Draw Dam, uh the White River this year will be overappropriated. So whatever that means, so.
That was our district engineer.
That was our district engineer, and a few of the other ones talking about it, and there were a few presenters that night that really gave some interesting looks at how they're uh studying the White River, and there's talk about, you know, expanding Lake Avery, and that's on the state because uh, uh, U of W, I think owns that, or through the state, and they're looking at maybe raising that up, but then if they raised up too high, then water will start getting on private property, I think on the northwest side of Avery up there, so there's lots of things being talked about there. Um, Alden gave a presentation on the um Kenny Reservoir and also on the uh new reservoir that they've been working on for a few years now, and uh just some really interesting uh presentations that night, so it's something that we all are aware of, that they're definitely looking at the White River, and there's people really wanting to hold that water. And that's not really locally, it's at the state federal level, that they're really grabbing a hold of it, and um you know, our problem is we don't use all the water rights on the White River, uh we use a lot of the water up front, and then uh comes down, the water goes down to Lake Need, Lake Powell, and we can't get that water back, so that's our struggle. Uh, and there's so many hamstrings being put on from environmental side of it and a few other things on, you know, just grabbing stuff that it's gonna, yeah, we already know it's gonna get interest- interesting, but I think everybody really needs to pay attention to it because us smaller communities are already run over. Almost like it's too late, and I hate saying that, so, you know, it's, it's a, it's a struggle, so. More studies, um agriculture coming and all that good stuff, so it'll be interesting.
Thanks, Tim. Anything else?
We haven't had too many meetings, I'm just excited for Alan to be here, and he's jumping in with both feet and.
I remodeled her office.
Ah.
It's your office now.
What she says. If I can't find my social security card, it'll be her office.
All right, council reports, besides, Tim just gave that one, anything else?
Sorry.
Oh, you're good, you're good.
That was a good meeting.
Yeah.
I'm glad Tim was able to attend, cause I was not.
It was over two and a half hours, so.
Anybody having council reports, I just wanted to put out, this is not what I've done, but was what's gonna happen, I have uh like I did last year, some of my students from my communications class are gonna pre- present to council. I have different students that are gonna present to the school board, and another set of students are gonna present to the hospital board. So we're gonna be doing that over the next couple of weeks. This group in here, I'm a little concerned about in the sense that they can't seem to get together a lot, but but they'll handle it very well, so.
But that's not happening tonight, is it?
No, next, it'll be our next meeting, is, and I'm gonna get all the stuff to Maribel, so we'll have it there, so.
Cool.
All right. Is there anybody else got anything on council reports? Okay, number eleven, supervisor reports. Now, the next one, I'm not sure how to do this, so I got reports from the officers, town manager update. Who's gonna give my town manager update?
There really isn't a, I mean, other than Alan's taking over and we're working together to try and get him familiar with everybody. We're gonna go to the energy symposium next week, and he'll get to meet a lot of, you know, regional people there, so that's kind of our goal together and.
I'm starting to amass items for the next meeting. I'll have my feet wet by then, we'll have some stuff to talk about, unless you all have questions of me and or anything like that as part of my work. Do you wanna put it together, a work session, to kinda hear where the council's at with things, or? Yes, I do, actually, cause, you know, I I got a lot of feedback in the interview process, but now it's time to get our hands dirty and get to work. You wanna get a month under your belt before we go? Uh, maybe, maybe not a whole month, I'd like to I'd like to have some good solid direction, good notes to kinda know how to build the start of my tenure here, so so probably just a couple of weeks will be fine with me, so. I don't know when uh when you all are available, or how your schedules look, but uh we could do a daytime or an evening meeting, whatever works best for the council. Evenings are better.
Evenings are better for me.
Yeah.
Would you like us just to propose a time and send it out in email, and then uh and then see, maybe, maybe put out two or three dates and see what we get back?
Yeah, do that, and that, and everybody can kinda see where where we are, I'm in it.
Should we just do it early on town council night, or do we want a special meeting altogether?
I think we need to give ourselves time.
Yeah. And I appreciate it.
Okay, so.
Yeah, you know, get a little preparation, I'd like to get a map up so we can like identify some areas, talk about what's going on there. Um, it'd be good to have everybody have their thoughts together. Get me on my way and that way, so.
Okay, yeah, if if you can just get some times or dates and whatever, then we can see who can be there, and and we may have to have some where maybe one of the or of our council members can't be there, but that's okay, I meant, as long as we got the group as such, we can do that.
Why don't you have Lisa get you on her group text, or start a new group text?
He's our.
Yeah, I I have responded to it. Um, and obviously, if anybody wants to stop by the office and.
Oh, we will.
Yeah, and then ask me, so maybe I'll have a cookie for my wife shop.
Yeah, there you go. If you do that, you're gonna get a lot of visitors, so.
But I, that's, that's better for me getting my job done, as long as everybody doesn't linger for hours, so.
So is that it?
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't, I mean, we've been busy doing that. I have amassed an amazing amount of junk. I took five boxes to get my crap home, so.
Understand.
The dumpster's full.
Yeah.
I understand that too.
When is your, when is your last day?
I'm gonna work full-time through April and me and Maribel have stuff to work through and like I said, obviously assist Alan with anything that he needs. And then I'll just probably come back at certain times just to like help Maribel with like budget and stuff like that.
See, the nice thing is we have one going away party for her and now we can have a second going away party for her.
Yeah, there we go.
Good.
Okay, uh, let me see. Do we have any old business? I don't see any on there. So our new business, fourteen A, discussion and action to approve the March twenty twenty-five check register.
I'll make a motion that we approve the March twenty twenty-five check register.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Andy, seconded by Sean, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Fourteen B, discussion and action to approve ordinance seven oh four twenty twenty-five, amended municipal code, code fifteen point five zero historical structure.
So both the ordinance and the resolution were recommendations by History Colorado, so we can apply again to get certified as a local government and move that forward. And then those grants will be available to community members and, um, business owners.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance seven oh four twenty twenty-five, amended municipal code fifteen dot fifty historical structure.
Second.
Motion made by Robbie, seconded by Andy, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Discussion and action to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero two A, resolution enabling authority for the Rangel Preservation Board and bylaws.
Make a motion to uh, approve resolution twenty twenty-five zero two A, resolution enabling an authority of the Rangel Preservation Board and bylaws.
Second.
Motion made by Todd, seconded by Robbie, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Discussion and action, oops, I missed one. Discussion and action to approve the revised resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero six, reauthorizing the town manager, Alan Parker, as the authorized agent to negotiate and execute all documents on behalf of the town of Rangel for the Sagewood West Affordable Housing Project.
So close to closing on that, not quite, so Alan will finish that job.
Alright.
Second.
Motion made by Robbie, seconded by Andy, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Discussion and action to approve the Sagewood West Minor Subdivision Phase One, dividing the lot into two lots.
I made a motion to approve the Sagewood West Minor Subdivision Phase One, dividing the lot into two lots.
I'll second.
Is that Todd? Motion made by Tim, seconded by Todd, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. F, discussion and action to appoint Alan Parker as a Northwest Transportation Planning Primary Vote Representative and Ron Granger as the alternate.
Salute.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Robbie, seconded by Sean, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, fifteen, informational items, CNC Foundation Dinner is April the twelfth, which is, it's hard to believe it's this weekend. So, hope to see you guys there. Moon Lake Electric, thank you.
They did a bunch of chipping for us and so a lot of the is down at the community garden, so they have this enormous chipper which takes about half of the time is our little baby one, so that was, and then they always string the lots on the Christmas tree for the town because we just don't have a boom truck that will reach that high, so. Kelly just wanted to make sure that they knew we appreciated them.
Okay, thank you.
Is the town ever gonna reopen the?
Not until people quit throwing trash there. So, I, I don't know.
Cause they're, they found a different spot to throw it.
I know, I, I don't know how to.
I'm having to deal with it, so.
I think it's just really hard for the guys to want to have to sit and babysit that because people don't want to.
Follow the rules.
Right.
Well, yeah, just when else where's.
I know, I just don't know how to resolve that, so that's probably something Alan and.
We tried.
Oh.
Oh.
They, uh, stole the camera.
Is there a creative?
We got cameras, they stole them.
I'm just spitballing, but is there, the way we could do it like Friday afternoons or something, one day a week and?
Pay somebody to sit there the whole time?
Well, that sure seems like a waste when you say it like that.
Well, I think Alan and Jeff can mold that over and see what they can come up with, but I mean, right now, Jeff's pretty discouraged about it and I don't blame him. I mean, we don't want trash down there.
Yeah. Don't want it up by the rec center either, but it's a little bit easier to dump up there than it is down there.
Yeah.
There's no gates.
Anyway, we'll, we'll think about it. I'm sure maybe we figure something out, but like I said, we've tried lots of things and people are just lazy.
It's been a problem in other communities that have been in.
Oh, they're gonna find a spot to dump it. That's what's.
So speaking of trash, C is Senior Trash Pickup is April twenty-second?
Is that working for you, Sean? So Sean assists the town with that, so.
Okay.
We're already getting our list going. I qualify.
It's hard to believe we're in April. Uh, board vacancies, we don't show any, we have scheduled announcements throughout there. Um, anybody see anything that they need to change? Kyle's not here to tell us it's different, so. Is there anything else for, from the council?
Is there anything, Matt?
Matt?
You guys have been on my calendar for a month. It's good to see you. Um, I just came with a quick update about AGNC with the Grant Navigator program and then some updates on what NCEI has been up to for the last three months outside of the work sessions that have been discussed. On the Grant Navigator stuff, federal funding still remains on hold, specifically the IIJA and IRA funding. But we're monitoring developments daily. State funding opportunities are opening up and we're actively tracking available resources to support you guys and your neighboring communities. Uh, the AGNC mini-grants are gonna be launching soon. Applications are out, I believe. Um, dive into those. If you're not filled in, get filled in by Lisa, myself, Tiffany, you'll meet everybody.
You're already plotting your downfall.
Awesome. Um, the annual report was, uh, released back at the February meeting. If you guys haven't taken a look at that, please do. Mr. Lynn and Tiffany put a ton of effort into that. Um, there is federal funding opening up. So on the Grant Navigator stuff, what helps the most is to know what projects are on the wish list. And then we can keep our ear to the ground as things come up and identify funding potential that helps you.
How much funding?
Limited funding is opening up, but funding is opening up.
Hold your breath tight.
The, uh, the state program traditionally has been limited to just IRA and IIJA funding. They're working to open up the, uh, scope of work on that program. And AGNC just wants to help the communities, so. Send the list. It, it, we've got a, a worksheet that we track projects on. I invite you to call, email, let's set up a Zoom or a phone call and you and I, I can catch you up on everything leading up to tonight and bring you in. And then you're gonna meet Tiffany and Miss Lynn and the rest of the crew in the next couple of weeks as well. On the NCI side, uh, just what's been going on for the last three months is about eighteen hundred hours of travel, work, meetings and, and a big push. Uh, I was in DC for the consortia meetings. Um, had an accidental dinner that we talked about with, uh, one of the directors of the DOE. Presented a presentation at Club Twenty on the full life cycle of nuclear energy that the Glenwood Springs Rotary is also asked to see. Uh, I was invited to Texas for South by Southwest where I represented Colorado's economic development and our efforts in the transition from coal. Um, and I'll be on a panel at the ECA meeting in Idaho Falls. Um, and, and we plan that panel, I think tomorrow or Thursday, so, but it's about economic development during the coal transition. Uh, the ECA meeting is open, um, registration is comped for elected officials. So if you guys didn't get the email, I'm happy to forward it again. Um, I think I introduced you to faith.
I forward it probably a couple of weeks ago to the council. Obviously Alan's got a million things to need and do, so I don't know if we'll make that one.
I was on the town council through three town managers, so I have empathy for you as much as I do them.
Just, my town, it's worked the other way around.
Yeah, it's a process. Um, finally, we put in, uh, well, two things to, to be quick in the summary. We put in a grant application at the first of the year. It opened up the first week of December and it was due the second week of January. So I spent my holiday putting together an application for a six million dollar grant to develop a five-state regional energy hub. And the idea was, and I was working with Carbon in Emery County as the Economic Development Districts for Southeast Utah, AGNC for Colorado, the State of Wyoming, Arizona, and New Mexico. To continue with the ground-up approach, instead of the top-down approach we've got from the governor here and Utah is experiencing some of that from another direction. How do we connect these energy-based communities and learn from each other, but also work together on workforce and tax-based goals? That funding is now frozen, but what we're doing is we're looking for private, uh, partnerships and funding so we can stand that project up. Everything comes down to ground-up approach and economic development. So I'm still working hard on that and that's basically the last three months in a nutshell, uh, with NCEI. Check your news feed in the morning or tonight. Uh, there was an executive order from President Trump today regarding coal through the transition. I haven't read it, uh, so I don't wanna quote it. But it'll be interesting to see how the state of Colorado and our utilities company respond to it. Um, i- i- and I'll leave it at that, but it's worth reading. I'm gonna study it tonight when I get home at ten and.
I'll forward it to everyone because AGNC pushed it up right before five.
That was done today.
Yes, sir.
Well, hopefully they're not giving up on coal.
No, he's.
Oh, no, he's pushing back.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean. We, we need to push back real hard. I'm really interested in the seed of this article.
I'm curious to see what he does to, uh, encourage the state to.
Right, because too many people, too many people have given up on, on that fight and because if they win the coal one, they're gonna go after methane. And methane's next.
Well, there's two things happening in that regard, but the rumor I heard is he's pulling funding from states that don't allow coal to continue through a transition. Um, the other thing that's happening at the state level is I'm sure you, you guys saw the emails from me and from, from Tiffany and Club Twenty last week. Um, the Colorado Energy Office and the governor are trying to push a late bill. Um, that would bump all the emission goals by ten years. So if you think of, I'm just gonna paint a picture for you that, uh, Wendell Kuntz from Delta County painted that's very graphic. If we're ninety percent by twenty thirty, ninety-five percent by twenty thirty-five, and a hundred percent by twenty forty, that means in the next five years, we need to cover ten thousand acres a, per year in solar panels to meet the goals. The other part of this sixty-page proposed late legislation is putting more restrictions on the PUC approvals, which would essentially rule out nuclear and rule out natural gas. Um, it would force us to be renewable only by the way it's written. So I've been working really closely, uh, with Sarah Blackhurst from Action Colorado. We submitted a letter that, uh, the Rio Blanco County, Garfield County Cham, uh, Commissioners, uh, Club Twenty, AGNC, NCEI all signed. In addition to, I think almost every utility company from the state of Colorado.
We did, they're pushing back on that one.
The utilities had a special meeting to help draft this letter that we all signed in on. Um, and the labor unions signed this letter demanding that they not introduce this late legislation. If it's introduced, it's the second breach of contract from the governor's handshake agreement last year. Uh, where he strong-armed two utilities for, I believe it was one point eight million dollars. So please watch this closely. I appreciate the responses that we got so quickly last week. Um, i- 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 I, I think Tiffany phrases, I say, we've got a date without a plan. Instead of a plan, they're proposing new dates. Tiffany phrases it better where she says, we're under attack. And we've gotta band together, working with Pablo as an energy community, but working with our region jointly so that we can try to get our voices heard in a united fashion. So with that, that's my update on the first quarter of the year, and I appreciate you letting me squeeze in some time at the end.
Sensually, all that will just bankrupt the state of Colorado or are gonna bankrupt, but it's gonna, it'll put the nail in the coffin.
That's what I don't understand. That's a hard point for me to get.
You know, i- it's, yeah.
Well, here's a graphic image for you that'll really help us end tonight on a good note. We're one point two billion dollars in the hole for our state budget right now. While the governor's office is growing, three hundred jobs, uh, three hundred offices in the last six years.
Right.
Forty-three percent of the state's budget comes from federal funding. I can't wait to read this executive order and see if it puts any heat on the state. So.
Right, that's a good point.
Maybe I'll go in there.
I'm gonna take off if you guys don't mind.
Thank you.
Please call me and email me. I'd love to get to know you better and welcome to town.
Are you gonna be at the school?
I will be at the symposium next week and I leave straight from the symposium for Idaho. So I'll see you there and we can exchange info and good luck. Big shoes to fill.
Oh, I'll break that.
Well, small shoes physically, but big shoes metaphorically. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I think following the liquor law dispute was much easier than talking about the nish laws of the town.
Anything else? We will adjourn the meeting at seven forty-eight.